Capitol City Council Meeting, we are going to begin with item one, which is roll call. And Chloe, do you want to say a few words before we jump into roll call?
Sure, thank you Mayor Brooks. Welcome everyone to the Capitol City Council Meeting. In accordance with the California Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also view livestream the meeting on the city's website. As always, this meeting is cablecast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. Thank you Mayor Brooks. And a roll call. Councilmember Trandt.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Story.
Here.
Mayor Brooks.
Yes. And if you can please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, we're now going to move on to item two, which is presentations. And we have a presentation from Visit Santa Cruz. And I see someone coming on now. Would you like to introduce yourself this evening?
Sure. Thanks Mayor Brooks, council members. I'm Maggie Ivy. I'm with Visit Santa Cruz County. And thank you for hosting me on the agenda. I'm going to take about 10 minutes and just talk about what's been happening in the tourism industry, state of tourism, COVID impacts, and looking ahead towards recovery efforts. For those of you that aren't quite as familiar with Visit Santa Cruz County, we're a countywide tourism marketing agency. We're actually a nonprofit, 501(c)(6). I report to a board of 25 members. Your city manager used to be on our board. We are funded by a special tourism marketing district, similar to the BIA in Capitola Village. It's a special district that hotels are supportive of, and they collect an assessment for every room night stay, and that funds our marketing efforts on an ongoing basis. Let me pull up my presentation though. Okay. There we go. So, this has been a challenging year for all of us, and certainly for the tourism industry. Our agency works with local lodging businesses and other hospitality businesses, and our goal is to bring in overnight business. We see that as high yield overnight during the off-peak seasons of the year. Over the last five years of the current district, we've seen steady growth in TMD funds, which has allowed us to really expand on a lot of the marketing to support the community. We have very robust campaigns that run in the spring and the fall in what we call our drive market in Northern California. We also have been able to invest a lot in social media and international marketing. International is on pause right now for obvious reasons, but we look forward to starting to restart those programs. Our businesses have really come to depend on some of that international travel, again particularly in the non-summer season. Pre-COVID, we were seeing pretty healthy growth in our budget. The tourism marketing district, their TMD assessments, pretty much follow the trend of TOT collections, as you might imagine. So, the year before COVID hit, we actually had peaked at about a $2.6 million budget. Last year, we saw about a half a million dollar drop in those revenues. Thankfully, we've had reserves set aside, and we have been able, when conditions allow, to continue marketing aggressively. So, 2018-19, the tourism industry in Santa Cruz County hit a huge milestone, hitting over a billion dollars in consumer spending in our county that year. This was something that we were particularly proud of and happy for the tourism industry, and something that's been, you know, a long time coming. We've had some losses since then, obviously, but this shows you a trend with the TOT collections over the last 10 years or so. Again, consistent growth. This was countywide. These are countywide figures, and we peaked at just about $25 million in 1819. Capitola TOT collections really followed that trend as well. And of course, hotel occupancy, as you would imagine, same trend. Continued, consistent growth for over a decade. Unfortunately, we were looking at about 30% loss in hotel occupancy in 2020 due to COVID, which was significant. You know, a lot of challenges for the lodging industry over the last year, but I will say that we weren't hit as hard as some communities that really depend on business travel and group corporate business on a larger level. So again, just a quick recap. We hit a billion in 2018-19. We've seen about 30 to 50% losses in tourism business overall. Visit California actually just announced today that they calculated a 55% decrease in visitor spending on average throughout the state. And for lodging, we're looking at two to three years by most predictions in the industry for a complete rebound. So, we had to pivot, as everyone has, the cities have, the local business communities. We jumped into the fray and started trying to help the local businesses keep their doors open with the Please Take the Pledge campaign. Really, our businesses got faced with not only their own compliance, but enforcement with the general public. So we were trying to do anything that we could to help send that message and make it friendly and try to make it supportive. And that was for locals and for visitors when visitors were able to come. We also ran a Let's Cruise Safely campaign, and I'm going to share one of the commercials for that. And it was running in county and actually out of county. We also joined, on behalf of all of the hotels and motels in Capitola and around the county, the California Hotel and Lodging Association. And what that did was allow those properties to work and get certified in CH and LA's Clean and Safe Program. So again, making sure that we're complying and that we're letting the public know what's happening and that the businesses were taking this very seriously. Our website has always been a primary tool for us, or I should say for at least the last 15 years, in terms of promoting tourism. And this year, it really again pivoted. It became a tool for us to talk about travel advisory, to actually let the public know now is not the time to visit when the restrictions were in place. And we also use the website during the CZU fires to help centralize displaced residents and firefighters and communicate with the hotels that had availability. Latest updates were also on the website in terms of hotels, restaurants, retail, what's open, and what are the guidelines for visitors and locals. So you may have seen our commercial that ran locally through last fall. I thought I'd just play it for everybody.
It's time to cruise safely. Your favorite local businesses are ready to welcome you back. Support your community. Take the pledge to help keep yourself and others healthy. Wear your mask, social distance, and let's cruise safely. To learn more, visit letscruise safely dot com.
So again, just pivoting back again to the website, we are finally starting to see our traffic ramp up again. It is the primary tool. We drive traffic to the website with all of our advertising and marketing. And you'll find all of the Capitola lodging properties and the participating other businesses on the site as well. We peaked actually in 1819 with over a million visitors to the site. Big dip this last fiscal year, but we're on track to exceed a million visitors again, and looking at a lot of pent-up travel demand coming our way. Social media continues to be a huge, play a huge role and even larger role as time goes on. And again, this is used to really parlay visitation and push traffic to the website and look toward booking business, you know, making it easy for the consumer to go ahead and book their hotel stay. Our content creation in social media allows us to really drill down and work individually with properties and themes. We represent the whole county, so we're very mindful that we want to be presenting those unique attributes of each part of the county. And I have to say that the ability for us to create our own content, much more so these days, and not just depend on the media, has been particularly helpful. We actually have over 100,000 followers combined. Instagram is the fastest-growing platform that we're using and so well-suited for Capitola and the county with the beauty that we have to share with the general public. So it's been a great program for us, and it continues to grow. We also do a lot of direct email marketing. We have a list of, actually, it's just over 60,000 subscribers now, as you can see on various subjects. And again, it allows us to drill down and really look at unique aspects of the area and promote more niche themes than a general television campaign is able to do. In a normal year, we get millions of dollars in media coverage. That's really slowed down. We're still getting a lot of contacts from the media. And much like I think the pent-up demand for consumer travel, we're going to start to see a lot more coverage for our community in the coming year. So it's really been about trying to maintain those relationships over the last year and keep top of mind. I mentioned earlier, international has been a big focus for us over the last 10 years. We were able to grow the international base for leisure visitation from 8% of our overall visitors to 13. All of this went on hold immediately last March. Through conversations with Visit California, we're expecting in 2022 to start to ramp up these efforts again. We've worked in conjunction with their efforts as one of the California destinations. And they're a great organization. Their budget's been decimated as well, but again, they're looking toward recovery in 2022. We just completed a survey of likely visitors to Santa Cruz County, which was full of a lot of good news. You might have seen an article in the paper last week. I will send a link for councilmembers so you can look over some of the details of that. But in general, it was good news. We wanted to know what was travel sentiment. And 61% of the respondents were positive about, yes, I'm going to be traveling this summer. 16% had already made their plans, and four out of 10 were finalizing plans. So travelers are ready to travel. They're ready to travel overnight. And we also found from those that follow us and are on our list locally that visitors, believe it or not, in general, are open to visitors coming back. So perhaps we're all realizing the economic value and the need to really jumpstart visitation again this year. I should say, the caveat is, visitors are still expecting to have people wearing masks and social distancing, and they appreciate all the safety measures the hotels are taking. They want them to continue doing that, although we're hearing different from the CDC today, I guess. So, spring campaign, with all that in mind, we have ramped up. Started April 1. We're running the campaign through June, and will probably continue a different campaign through the summer because again, we just want to be top of mind. We are in recovery mode. We are hoping that in the next couple of weeks, we're going to hear we're in the yellow tier. But in the meantime, we've already ramped up our vacation giveaway. We're running television and digital in our drive markets. And it's all about the road trip this year. That's what people are most comfortable with. So that's good news for us, because over 85% of our visitors come from that drive market. The challenge is, every other destination in California is also after those visitors. So we're spending about a half a million dollars for the spring campaign this year, and that's on straight media buys to make sure that we are hopefully outspending and top of mind in our markets. These are just a few examples of the digital efforts. We've worked with different publications over the years and digital marketing platforms. These are some of those that have performed best for us, and we're really doubling down on those this year. Social media, Let's Cruise safely will continue to be our theme. What we're also hearing in the survey were, you know, with information about outdoor dining is preferred, outdoor recreation, being at the beach, fresh air, parks, beaches, all that good stuff, and safety first. So some of our messaging to the local businesses is, keep up the good work. You're doing a great job. You know, we all want to support you. Let's make sure that we keep up this good work through the summer and make sure that, you know, Capitola, the county as a whole, is really seen as a safe and welcoming place to visit this summer as people start to venture out. And with that in mind, here is our commercial that's running in the market.
Let's cruise safely. Santa Cruz County is here to welcome you this season. Hit the road. Come out and play. Enjoy the view. And go with the flow. Plan your getaway. Visit letscruise safely dot com. Safety, wear a mask, and practice social distance. Enter to win your Let's Cruise vacation getaway at letscruise safely dot com.
And I'm happy to answer any question. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight.
Thank you so much. That was very informational, and I love seeing Capitola in that picture. Thanks for including us. Look at all our fun spots. Any questions from council before we move on? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, Ms. Ivy. Thank you so much for your time, and I look forward to enjoying our beautiful town and seeing that commercial.
That's right. Welcoming those visitors back. Thank you all.
Absolutely. Okay, so now we're going to move on to item three. That's a report out on closed session. And so the report out, we have closed session as listed on the agenda. And so the report out, we have closed session as listed on the agenda, and there's no action was taken this evening. So moving on to item four, additional materials. Do we have any additional materials from staff?
Yes, Mayor Brooks, there was one additional material sent out regarding item 9A, the zoning code item. It was three attachments to the proposed resolution before you this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Now on to item five. This is additions and deletions to the agenda. Do we have any this evening? Jamie, we can't hear you. Go nothing.
Try this. Does that work? Staff has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Yes. Great. Thank you. All right. So we're now going to move on to item six. This is public comments. So if you'd like to make a public comment, go ahead and send an email now to publiccomments@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions, then clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing *9 on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You will have up to three minutes to speak on items not on this evening's agenda. Larry, do we have any attendees with their hands raised?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, and I, we do not have any emails on that item.
Okay, we'll just give it a second. If you want to refresh your screen and let us know if there's any public comments.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any additional public comments on this item.
And granted, we, there's something weird going on with the internet out in the world of Capitola today, so I'm just going to make sure we give everyone ample time to click send if necessary. So we're now going to move on to item seven. That's staff and city council comments will begin with staff. Staff, do you have any comments? Told you, something's going on with the internet. The internet.
I think I need to give up using my external microphone. No, we have no comments this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. And comments from council. I see Vice Mayor Story's hand raised. We'll go ahead and start with the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to report out about our last Art and Cultural Commission meeting, which was last Tuesday. Probably a couple of, well, three items I wanted to report out on. One, if the council remembers, I think a couple of months ago, about the council had directed the BIA's request for banners in the village to the Arts Commission to work with the BIA to select and create those banners. That matter came back to the Arts Commission on us Tuesday, and apparently the BIA has asked the Arts Commission to take over that project. And the Arts Commission's response or action was to set up a subcommittee, an exploratory subcommittee, to just get some more information about, you know, the nature of the BIA request and what the scope of that work may entail. And we will certainly be working on that in meetings coming up, and we'll report back to the council as appropriate. The other item that we discussed concerning the painting of the stairs leading up to Depot Hill, you know, we had set up a committee to review that and to connect some of the residents with the artist and to answer their questions. There was an actual webinar that was established. That was reported back to the commission. And then there was also discussion that the matter is coming back to the council at our May 27 meeting coming up. And that was just, you know, the nature of the discussion concerning that project. The final item was the summer concert event. And we are still just kind of waiting. We are poised to present some version of the Twilight concerts, assuming that we will be able to, and that we can figure out how to keep it, you know, safe for everyone since it is an outdoor but a public event that's well-attended. So, and the other is, you know, the Sunday at the Park event. We are still poised and have not made a final decision on that yet. We're still waiting to see what the health orders may be. So that's my report out about our last Arts Commission meeting. Thank you.
The Vice Mayor's story. Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. As some of you may know, for the last six or seven years, I've been the city's representative to the Community Action Board of Santa Cruz County. And I wanted to share that May is Community Action Month. Here in Santa Cruz County, the Community Action Board, known as CAB, has been fighting poverty and creating social change in the county for over 56 years. CAB's social services support 11,000 people with low incomes each year. And CAB's programming has four focus areas: community service, immigration, homelessness prevention and intervention, and employment. And I would like to invite everyone to visit the website, Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube to learn more about how community action agencies support our communities most vulnerable. And that is all from me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Councilmember Kaiser.
Thank you. As some of you also on council probably saw, we've had some requests to fly a pride flag for the month of June, which is Pride Month. And so I wanted to bring it on to next agenda and ask the staff to review a policy for June Pride Month flag. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I must certainly think that's a great idea. And also, councilmembers, we've been receiving a lot of emails around 3CE and the energy, our energy program here. And just to make you aware, I and our city manager, Jamie Goldstein, sit on that board, and we just had our first meeting. There'll be two more meetings. And the 3CE agency has asked that if there's anybody with concerns or questions, to please email them, and they will be doing more outreach in the next coming weeks. Okay. So moving forward, if we have no other council comments, we're on to item eight. That's consent calendar. We'll take this as all one action. If I can have a motion to approve our consent calendar. Councilmember Peterson.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
We have a first from Councilmember Peterson. Do we have a second?
I can second that.
We have a first from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Kaiser. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
Hi, Grady.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Hi.
Councilmember Peterson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Brooks. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Story. I'm so sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. And Mayor Brooks.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, that item passes unanimously already. They're trying to boot me out of this position. I see how it is, Chloe.
Not at all.
Okay. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Okay. So item 9A, this is a presentation of the Coastal Commission recommended modifications to Capitola Municipal Code, Chapter 17 zoning code. And this evening, who do we have presenting?
Sorry. It looks a bit... Good evening, Mayor Brooks and council. Sorry, I'm just getting this slideshow rolling. Let's see, from beginning. Things are slow on the internet this evening. Let's see. Okay, can you see my screen? Can you see this screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. Okay, before you this evening is, I think, the final update for you regarding our zoning code and maps and the Coastal Commission certification. I'm quickly going to go over the process and then give you an update on what we learned from the Coastal Commission more recently. So currently, we have two zoning codes, one that's applicable inside the coastal zone and one outside the coastal zone. For the new code to be applicable inside the coastal zone, it must first be certified by the California Coastal Commission. We're at the final step of, we submitted our Coastal Commission edits, our zoning code to the Coastal Commission. And a few weeks back, they reviewed our submission and gave us some recommended changes. So we're at this step here. They have, we have an approval that's contingent upon Capitola adopting red lines. There are three options the city council has tonight. We can either accept their red lines and we'll have a certified zoning code citywide. We can decide not to accept the red lines and take no further action, and we'll continue utilizing two zoning codes throughout the city. Or we could not accept the red lines and propose some revisions. This evening, I am recommending that the city council accept the Coastal Commission red lines. And I'll take you through the four main categories that they've asked for revisions in. First topic is the Monarch Cove Inn. Actually, at the Coastal Commission meeting, it was a really great meeting. There were maybe a half dozen Depot Hill residents that showed up, as well as the owners of the Monarch Cove Inn. And the Coastal Commission really took to heart what they had to say. They also received at least a dozen emails from Depot Hill residents, as well as the owners of the Monarch Cove Inn. And when reviewing our LCP, they voiced that they really appreciated the concerns of the owners, as well as the Depot Hill residents, and they wanted to take more time on this item. So they asked that staff remove any updates related to the Monarch Cove Inn within our zoning code, take them out for this certification process, and ask them to work with the owners and have them resubmit and come back for a separate review so that they could take time and really dive into the issues there and come up with a mutual resolution. So what, the outcome of that is that the old code now has made its way into our new code as Chapter 17.30. So we're bringing back the visitor-serving district, but only those items that are related to the Monarch Cove Inn. So all the previous development standards related to the Monarch Cove Inn will be reintroduced within its own chapter. And then in Chapter 17.28, where we had all of the new standards for Monarch Cove Inn, we've got to strike through. The other change is that was in the general plan map. We've brought back its designation that has been historically of visitor-serving. As well as on our zoning map, we had proposed an R1 with the visitor-serving overlay. We've brought it back to what it was historically and just as visitor-serving. That's the update on the Monarch Cove Inn. So you'll have that one come back to you in the future. The Inn at Depot Hill site, when I brought this to you about a month ago, the Coastal Commission had made it clear that they did not want the R1-based zoning and that we should maintain it as a visitor's accommodation with the visitor-serving overlay. So again, two changes to the map, both the land use map and the zoning map. And then there's no real impact in terms of the use there. So this is the change that doesn't have much impact, that the use can continue and is supported within the general plan map change. So again, took away that R1-based zone. And in the general plan, it'll be visitor accommodation with a visitor-serving overlay. And in the zoning map, it'll be visitors serving as both the base zone and the overlay And next is the former theater site. As you'll recall, in our zoning code update, as well as our general plan, there's new standards for incentivizing a hotel on the former theater site. And we had left the rest of the standards within the code the same for this site. And when the Coastal Commission reviewed our proposal, they asked that, they recommended that the city take out any ties to just a pure residential use there, and that should really be visitor-serving. So within the update, within the land use table that's specific to that, the visitor-serving general, they've put in footnotes that residential use is prohibited on the former Capitola Theater So that, you know, it's more of a, on that last one, getting, utilizing the stick rather than the carrot, we had a carrot approach. That, our approach is still in the code. There are incentives in terms of floor ratio and height, but just the ability to apply for a commercial on the bottom and strictly residential on top is no longer something they can apply for. It will have to be a visitor-serving use, such as a hotel. So, and finally, they made modifications to our visual resource protection. So within that incentivized chapter, when we have the incentives to go higher at the theater site, there's different references to viewpoints, as well as preservation of views. And they just, they added language in there to specify where the viewpoints are, and then also some other improvements to describing rooftops and how they should be, how we should reduce visual impact. So those changes also are not substantial. They're an improvement to our code. So in reviewing the Coastal Commission recommendations, we found that they're in line with the city's local coastal program and really protecting our coastal resources and this beautiful place we call Capitola. And also in line with the Capitola General Plan and our vision for the future. So my recommendation tonight is to adopt a resolution accepting the California Coastal Commission modifications, amending the city's general plan map, the zoning map, and also the specific chapters that are attached to the resolution. With that, I'm available for questions.
All right. Thank you so much, Katie. We have many questions from council.
Did the...
Oh. Pardon. Vice Mayor Story.
Yeah, thank you. Katie, the theater property and the prohibition against residential, would that apply or to prohibit if the current owner wanted to develop condominiums on the site? That would be, I mean, potentially rented out and use this hotel?
So if it were residential and not rented out, it would be prohibited. I think the developer could come in with a proposal that we may have to, if they wanted to do condos and do something kind of similar to like Seascape, where certain, the condos have to be rented for a certain amount of the year.
Right.
If they wanted to do something like that, I do think we'd have to go through an amendment, possibly if they're going to be sold individually. But in talking to the Coastal Commission about that idea, they said that's something they'd have to work through with us, possibly on an amendment. But at this point, yeah, to produce it as residential that would be sold individually, that would not be allowed at all. It all depends on the structure and what they bring in.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, getting back to the Monarch Cove, was there any timeline put out there in terms of the negotiations with the neighbors and the Blodgets?
No, there was no timeline specified. I'm, it's really going to have to be initiated by the Blodgets to come back in and ask for us to start this process again. But I expect they'll be back in soon, and we'll move forward with the amendment once they come in. and ask for us to start this process again. But I, I expect they'll be back in soon and we'll move forward with the amendment once they come in.
So it's on their initiation?
It is, yeah. At this point, if we have this adopted, it's on their initiation to move forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from council? Okay, so now we'll open public comment for this item. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking raise hand in your Zoom application or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. Our moderator will unmute you and then you will have up to three minutes to speak. Larry, do we have any hands raised from our, from our attendees?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll just give that a second. Remember to speak if you call them at star nine. Or you can raise your hand. And what about any emails, Larry?
I'm refreshing right now. And I do not see any emails. And I'll check again on the, and I do not see attendees with their hands raised.
Okay, we're just going to give this item one more full minute, which seems like the longest ever when we're just staring at each other. And then when we wrap up public comments, this will come back to council for deliberation. It's always so hard, the one minute.
What, no jokes even?
I knew it, I knew it.
You beat me to it, Margo.
I feel like I should have them ready, just lined up for the rest of the year. Vice Mayor Story, I'm going to expect the same. Some good jokes. And can you believe it? It still has not been a full minute, but Larry, if you want to refresh your...
Yes, I'm going to refresh emails. I, I do not see any emails and there is no one with their hands raised on this item.
Thank you so much. So we'll bring this back to council for further deliberation and a vote. We have a motion to approve item nine A.
Can I make a motion to approve it?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, but I'm, I'm, I'm going to recuse myself from the portion concerning Monarch Cove.
Oh, yeah, you live out there.
Okay, so I'm going to lean on our city attorney to make sure we're all good with that first from councilmember Bertrand and a second to approve, and I'll read the whole thing in a second. But are we comfortable with the first and the second, even though Vice Mayor Story needs to recuse himself?
So since the item has not been segmented, it would be best for Vice Mayor Story to recuse from the entire item.
I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor Story.
Well, I guess I'll withdraw my second and I'll sign out for, until the vote is done. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a first from councilmember Bertrand, councilmember Peterson.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second to receive staff presentation and adopt a resolution accepting the California Coastal Commission modifications, amendments to the City of Capitola general plan, zoning map and zoning code, chapter seventeen point two eight, visitor-serving overlay zones, and chapter seventeen point eight eight incentive for community benefits and reinstating portions of zoning code, chapter seventeen point three zero VS visitor-serving district specific to the Monarch Cove Inn. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
And Mayor Brooks.
Aye. So this item passes with four with one refusal. And before we move on, I'd like to pause.
Congratulations, Katie. Oh, thank you.
I was getting your zoning code up.
Thank you.
So Jamie, I think this is a perfect moment just to share a quick story about the importance of this case.
Yeah, I really did want to just take a second, Katie, to thank you for all your good work on the zoning code. I know you've been after this for so long. I remember back in 2014, I think you and Rich, the former community development director, came to me and said, we have this strategy to streamline the zoning code update by doing issues and options at the front end, and it's going to make it go so quick from there on out. And so I'm just so glad you were right. And it was only seven years because if we hadn't done that, I think it might have been ten. So congratulations, Katie. You've worked so hard. We all appreciate all the great work you've done. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Katie. I couldn't have said it better. I was just thinking about when I came on in 2018, I said, what is this? What are we talking about? I don't understand any of it. And you took so much time and care to really go over it with me and I'm just so happy to finally see it completed. You are truly, truly appreciated. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, I really appreciate those kind words. And I've, you know, I've gotten to work with all of you and other council members and a mix of different planning commissioners over the years. And everyone is, their impact is in that code and I think it's really going to preserve Capitola as this beautiful place and as an inclusive place. And it's really exciting to be able to open one book in the future. So my pleasure and pleasure working for you all. Thank you.
Now the question, is that Gail's cake?
Aye.
All right.
Yes, it is.
That was going to say.
Wow, my girls are going to be happy tonight.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, I wish we were eating cake with Katie. Let's move on to item nine B. This is an update on the Wharf rehabilitation project, contract amendment with Moffett and Nichol engineers for final design and construction services and authorization to proceed with preparing plans and the specifications for our piling repair project. Mr. Jessberg, this is your item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm seeing you can share, see my screen, so continue if you can, just let me know. Thank you. So this is an update on our Wharf project. Just, I'm going to give you a little bit more background. It's been a couple of years before since this item's been at the council. And I just want to kind of touch base and make sure we're all on the same page as we go forward. So with the adoption of Measure F in 2016, the council established some, some goals, some projects they wanted to see completed, mainly the flume rehabilitation project, the jetty rehabilitation project, and the Wharf project. As you know, the flume and jetty projects were just recently completed this spring. In fact, their notice of completion will be on the next council's agenda. Considering the Wharf project, we only, we always knew this was going to be a longer lead time to get this project completed, just based on where it's located and the amount of money it's going to cost. There was actually a resiliency report repaired by Moffett and Nichol engineers back in 2015. It was kind of the form, framework that Measure F was used to pass, identifying repairs that need to be made to the Wharf. With the approval, approval of Measure F, Moffett and Nichol was hired to develop the projects, prepare preliminary plans, host workshops, and begin permitting. In October of 2018, then again in June of 2019, the city council held hearings where we reviewed project options and got direction from them. At the June nineteen meeting, the scope of work for the project was approved, based on a subcommittee that had met with council. And based on these, the estimated amount of Measure F funds we anticipated being available for this project, phase one of the project includes funding for Measure F and other funds that we make available. For example, we have a, we got a state grant for the project. It includes resiliency project by widening the trestle, utility upgrades, damage pile replacement, and new restaurants. The estimated cost is anywhere between five and seven million dollars. And we can kind of pick and choose that number a little bit, depending on what we want to include on the available funding. Phase two, which is sometime in the future on funding that needs to be identified, would actually raise the Wharf, the head of the Wharf where the buildings are, five feet, and then use the trestle at that point as a ramp up to the new buildings. That'd be a fourteen million dollar project. Here's a sketch, I'll go over this really quickly, this is what we used when we were talking about it. The top in the yellow is option one, the bottom is option two. Option one, as you see, has this widening, it's the solid yellow, all new decking, which is the crosshairs, two new restrooms, all one level, seven, seven million dollars. Then we'd come back, if there's funding available in the future, we would raise the end of the Wharf from nineteen feet to twenty-four feet, replace the buildings here, and then extend each of these piles along the trestle to meet, meet the new higher edge. The piles we're selecting for phase one are fiber moss piles that are easy to extend. To extend the old trestle part, you'll have to look at either replacing the existing piles or extended finding a way to extend the wood piles. So the current status is the CEQA was approved in April 2020. All permit applications then were submitted by July of 2020. We have received a permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We are waiting for permits from the Coastal Commission, Corps of Engineers, National Marine Fisheries, and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and we expect to have those all by mid to end of summer. Plans are thirty percent complete. The only reason we keep them at thirty percent is we're waiting to see if there's any permit conditions we need to necessitate changing to the plans. I think they're, they're kind of working on them slowly to make sure they can get them ready and pretty quickly if we need to move. We estimate the construction length will be nine months for this whole project. So now some good news on the permit side. In the agenda report, I talk about a NIMSS mitigation requirement that would limit our ability to, or a time window to drive new piles to July, or, you know, June through October, which is basically our summer here, when the Wharf is in its highest use. Luckily, we provided them some information and an alternate mitigation plan that they have now accepted. We got word on Tuesday that they have accepted it. This new proposal and mitigation will require, will allow year-round pile driving, except no driving at night, which we really had never anticipated, but just to clarify, no driving during or immediately after any storm event, and to maximize vibratory driving and impact driving. And that's just the, the method to put the pile in the mud, you bang it with a hammer, that's the impact that creates the most noise, the vibrate, where you just shake it, is much, much less noisy. So the NIMSS has agreed with that, so luckily that constraint is now lifted from the project. Now some really great news. Today, we received word from Congressman Panetta that the Capitola Wharf project has been recommended by him for some federal funding. Thanks to the mayor who led this effort, Congressman Panetta has listed us one point four million dollars, and he's allowed to nominate ten projects. We really don't know what the process is, but we've made the first step, which was to make this public recommendation on behalf of Congressman Panetta. So this is great news moving forward. We'll keep the council informed as we move forward with this. Like I said, we've asked for one point four million dollars. There's ten projects on his recommended list. We are the largest ask, but I think we have the biggest need. And we had a great meeting with him out on the Wharf and he seemed truly to be interested in trying to keep the Wharf. I think the best part was giving him a picture of his dad at the opening of the Wharf. Looking at the project schedule, so originally, as we're kind of laying this out about a year ago, we anticipated having all our permits in place today and actually be moving toward getting bids so that we can construct it this fall and winter. Obviously, we're a little bit behind on our permitting and now we have the federal funds, funding potential that we probably need to wait for. As I said, NIMSS is no longer an issue, given that it's stated in the report. So the federal funding, the federal budget is approved in September, so that's when I think we would get confirmation. We may get some heads up before then, but certainly we wouldn't know a positive vote until the federal budget is adopted. If we do get federal funding, we will require NEPA certification, which NEPA is the federal equivalence of CEQA. I'll probably get it wrong, so I'll just leave it at NEPA. And I anticipate that actually could take us four to six months to complete. It could be relatively quickly, it could be quite time consuming. We're just, I'm sure until we know details of where the funding's coming from. So with, assuming kind of a worst case, we would delay bidding until April 2022 at that point, with construction occurring next fall, so a year later. If federal funding is not successful, then we could be prepared to move as soon as that's official and say that's September of this year. We could construct potentially this fall, I'm sorry, next spring, summer, and fall. We might, we want to discuss whether we want to avoid construction during the summer. That had always been our goal. So it may be that we end up constructing next fall anyway, but that's something we can discuss once we know more about the federal funding. So with the delay in the projects, the engineers and staff, myself, grow to, are growing more and more worried about the steel pilings at the head of the Wharf. We had, you know, anticipated building it this fall, so we were, we were working on that timeline, so confident, providing, or not working on those until that time. Now we're looking into delay, which could last as long as a year. We really think it's time to deal with the steel piles at the head of the pile. And I have a picture I'll show you here in a minute of them. They're quite corroded, they're still working, they're still doing what they need to do, but they're just, it's time to work on them. Also, this past winter, we had some damage under the restaurant that occurred. It didn't affect the structure, but we think it'd be best to deal with it and import and shore it up before it does lead to further damage. So as part of the approvals tonight, we're asking authority to prepare a project. We will return with the plans and specs and all that to have you authorize us going to bid, hopefully in June. And we will, as long as we have all our permanent approvals, all this work was anticipated in this project, in that resiliency of the larger project. We can build it in phases without having to get new permits. Also, the state grant has indicated that as long as we have our permits in place, we can use that state funding for this first phase of the larger project, if you will. So our schedule would be to bid it in June, construct it in November, September to November. And right now, our estimated cost is eight hundred thousand dollars. I think we will be refining that as we get the plans together. And when we return with the approval of the plans, we'll update that estimate at that time. So here's a picture of the, of the Wharf. You can see the erosion, corrosion on the piles, all rusted. This pile in particular is, is, I don't want to say near failure, because I don't think it's going to fail tomorrow or the next day, but certainly a year from now, it could be severely compromised. And it's, it's just time to, what we're going to do is probably either sleeve these and fill them with concrete, or we're going to put a sleeve inside and fill it with concrete. So either way, these will become concrete-filled piles that will be much more resistant to corrosion than the steel piles they put in the nineteen eighties. So finally, the main emphasis of tonight's item is to extend Moffett and Nichol's engineering contract. They've done all the work for the, on these three projects. They were originally given a contract in 2017 in the amount of a hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred dollars to develop the projects, you know, kind of tie down their scopes, do the environmental work. They conducted two workshops for us. And at that time, we estimated the total engineering contract at probably top of a million dollars, even though we're starting at a, at a low amount. Because we really hadn't known what was involved in the permitting and design work at that time. In 2018, we came back and added five hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. That was to begin permitting for all three projects, take the flume and the jetty through final design so we could get those out and bid. We later removed seventy thousand five hundred dollars from that project because as part of the council's approval of the scope of work, we took the buildings out of that project to replacing the buildings. So the architectural fees in there were taken out. And then under that contract, we, we did rather well. Moffett and Nichol did not spend every dime. They've been very cognizant of, of their chargingness. And we were actually able to utilize that contract to help, have them help us with the damage that occurred to the Wharf in 2021, when we almost lost the waste. So we were able to get some extra work under the existing budget there. At this point, the budget is just about spent. They are continuing to work, but it's time for the final amendment and we're recommending approval of it, so three hundred fifty-one thousand, three hundred dollar contract. contract. It'll be for the final permitting plans, specifications, construction support, and forty thousand dollars in unforeseen support, which is anticipated we'll need as we finalize that project. So here's a quick contact summary, the different phases and the amount of money. In the total, we will spend it as nine hundred eighty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, which is under the million dollars we originally estimated. So the recommended actions tonight are to approve a contract amendment to Moffett Nichols Engineering Contract, adding three hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars for final design and construction service of the Wharf Rehabilitation Project, and provide direction to Public Works to repair a project, to repair failed pilings and other and other work for construction this fall. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Vice Mayor Story.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. Thanks, Steve, for that update. My question goes to, when the plans are finalized, will they come back to us in the form of a public hearing so that, you know, the public will have a final opportunity to weigh in on the design?
Absolutely. With any project, we'll come back with project specs and have the plans approved. We could schedule another hearing in advance of that if you'd like, just to review the plans once we know all the permit conditions. That might be a worthwhile adventure, too.
Right. Yeah, I think it may take more than one shot at it. Just to, because, you know, it's a very visible, it's a huge project for the city and so. But yeah, I'm glad to hear that there will be further opportunities for public input. Thank you.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks, and thank you, Steve, for the presentation. I was just wondering, you were talking about the piles that are at the front of the wharf and filling them with concrete. Is that just a Band-Aid solution, or is that something that's included in this whole sort of million-dollar lump sum? Or is that going to also have to be redone once the actual project starts?
No, that is the permanent repair that we would be doing. We're just pulling those out in advance right now, but it is the permanent repair.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we're going to move on to open public comment for this item. If you would like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you. You will have up to three minutes to speak. Larry, do you have, do we have any attendees with their hands raised?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised at this time on this item, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll just give it a minute. So, anything now?
I'm doing a refresh. I do not see anyone with their hands raised, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll bring this back to comments from council and further deliberation and a vote. Do we have any council comments? So we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Do I have a motion to approve item nine B?
I'll make the motion to approve this item, IB.
Second back.
We have a first from Councilmember Bertrand and a second from Councilmember Kaiser to approve a contract amendment to Moffett and Nichols Engineers Contract for the Wharf Rehabilitation Project in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred dollars for final design and construction services, and receive a report regarding a phased project to address existing failing piles in advance of the primary wharf resilience project. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you to staff, and thank you again to staff for hosting our visitor, Jimmy Panetta, the other day. I think it was obviously well-received, and fingers crossed we'll get this funding to finalize the entire project. So thanks again. We're going to move on to item nine C. This is Camp Capitola in the SoCal Union Elementary School District, and I believe, Nikki, this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Brooks, councilmembers. I will take just a minute to share my screen or your presentation. Everybody can see my slides well? All right, so the item before you tonight is Camp Capitola Operation at SoCal Union Elementary School District. So Camp Capitola is the city's summer day camp program that has been operated at the Capitola Community Center for quite some time. Before the pandemic, the program offered full-day program and half-day program, which included your typical summer camp recreation activities, which were sports games, arts and crafts, walking field trips, fun. And we served about three hundred participants each summer. This summer, Camp Capitola, as last summer, will operate under the California Department of Public Health COVID-nineteen Guidance or Youth Program. And it's, the, we, sorry, Capitola Recreation has previously established youth programs with the school district. We have, have in the past, pre-pandemic, the Capitola Rec Club, which was hosted at New Brighton Middle School, which was an after-school program. In response to the pandemic, we provided the OST program as a distance learning support, and then have recently transitioned that program to a after-school program now that the students are doing four days of in-person learning at their school. The district provides a summer school program each summer, invites students to attend that program. Traditionally in the past, it has just been at one particular school, but this year, the district decided to have it at each school site for accessibility. And typically, Campus Kids Connection would be the provider for the school district to provide a summer camp that would follow the summer school day. However, CKC has not operated since March of twenty twenty with the shutdown of the pandemic. And as they are returning to operation, are only planned to provide program at Main Street Elementary for this summer. The city has already established a relationship with the school district, and our residency requirements for recreation programs includes the school district boundaries, and so would make a reasonable partner moving forward for a camp program to follow the summer school program that the school district hosts. So the city will expand the Camp Capitola program as it is now, same session length, same structure, same fee structure, but provide a half-day program at each of the elementary schools that does not have an option. So that would be SoCal Elementary, Santa Cruz Gardens, and then, given appropriate staffing resources, also New Brighton Middle School. The program would operate Monday through Friday and would start at eleven-thirty AM and go until four PM with an option for extended care that would take the day until five PM. Each site will have a capacity of twenty-four participants, which is actually the same as the OST after-school that is currently operating on those campuses. And for the program, we would be using the already existing Camp Capitola fees for a two-week session half-day fee, which is a hundred and fifty-three dollars for residents and a hundred and ninety-one for non-residents. The school district has pledged to contribute sixteen thousand dollars in funds to support the program. A typical summer with the city's budget beginning in July, so summer programs typically stand two different budgets. And so this will be equally divided between those two budgets. The anticipated additional income for the FY twenty twenty-one budget is twenty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-two with expenses at twenty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-one. A resolution amending the current FY twenty twenty-one budget is included with this item. And then the portion of this program that would be in the upcoming FY twenty twenty-one budget is included in the draft budget. So staff recommendation is to receive the presentation regarding the operation of Camp Capitola Program at SoCal Union Elementary School District Site and adopt the proposed resolution amending the FY twenty twenty-one Recreation Division Budget. And I am available for questions at this time. And I'd also like to point out that Michelle Kennedy, Assistant Superintendent for the School District, is also in attendance this evening, should council have any questions for her as well.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I think you mentioned at the beginning of the presentation that the program would continue to follow COVID guidelines. And I know that right now, the, what's suggested is that all of the mask requirements are going to be going away in about a month, in June fifteenth. So does that mean that the students or participants would no longer have to be wearing masks during the program, or would that still be required?
Thank you for asking that. Unclear. At the moment, we are following the guidance that has been provided for youth programming. The state has not changed any of that existing guidance, and so we will follow that until, until it is changed, until we have revision.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, so now, oh gosh, where are my notes? Now we'll open this to public comment for this item. I don't have this memorized yet. I will by the end of the year. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking raise hand in your Zoom application, or by dialing star nine on your landline phone. A moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from our attendees?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody with their hands raised comment, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll just give it a second. Ladies and gentlemen, I have a joke. What did the ocean say to the shore?
Wait a minute, it just waved.
Was this my joke last time?
I think so. Isn't this the same joke from last time?
Because it was like Earth Day or something, wasn't it?
Okay, I'm gonna work on that. I'm gonna work on it. Let's refresh. Larry?
Ask the donut.
I do not see any attendees asking to talk on this item, and I do not see any emails.
All right, let's move this back to council for comments and a vote. Any comments from council? Councilmember Bertrand.
My daughter has fond, very fond memories of having been in Camp Capitola. And so it's great that, Nikki, you've partnered with the school district, so many more kids could, you know, have the same set of memories. And so I'm glad the school district and Michelle's on the line, so I'm glad she's part of this. I'm sure she helped with the funding. And so, all around, good deal, good deal.
Thank you. Okay. And any other comments? Otherwise, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
We have a first.
I can second.
We have a first from Councilmember, Vice Mayor Story, and a second from Councilmember Kaiser to a, excuse me, to receive presentation regarding the operation of the Camp Capitola Program at SoCal Union Elementary School District Site and adopt the proposed resolution amending the twenty twenty-one Recreation Division Budget. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Okay, moving on to item nine D. Receive report on grant award from California Office of Emergency Services for the emergency power improvement at the City Hall Complex.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before you is a consideration of in a report on a grant we received to install solar and battery improvements at City Hall for emergency power. The city received a three hundred thousand dollar grant from California Office of Emergency Services for backup power. This is part of their impact reports for public safety power shutdowns, or PSPS as they're more affectionately known. We've had two rounds of grants. We were unsuccessful in the first round. The second round, we were successful in obtaining the amount of grant we requested. The scope of the project includes installation of solar panels and battery backups, batteries, power storage units, and decommissioning the diesel generator currently servicing just the police department. The new solar panels and battery will be sized to service and keep all City Hall, council chambers, peony room, and the police department operational for a period of time. Period of time is going to be dependent on the design as we go through this. Staff is recommending that the project be completed using a design-build process. Our typical process is we prepare a design, we bid it, and we build it. This time, we're going to let the contractors do the designing, so we make sure we get the latest and greatest technology that's out there, and also for them to address some of the options that are available in the solar industry today. So to complete the design, the design-build process, the city will issue requests for qualifications and pre-qualify contractors. The city will then receive bids from the approved contractors, and the city will then award a contract. And the award of that contract can either be based on price, if they're all equal, or we can establish other criteria, such as the number of hours that it keeps City Hall operational, or other things, other criteria that we need to identify. That'll be something we'll be working on. The schedule and the physical impacts, Calius has given us an extension. It was originally a deadline of October of this year to complete it. They realized that the challenges in meeting all the public contracting code probably prohibited agencies from being able to meet that deadline, so they've extended it to March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Project budget includes a three hundred thousand dollar grant. There is a ninety thousand dollar local match for a total budget of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. It is anticipated that the local match could come from the facility fund, and if we move forward tonight and get the approvals we need, that allocation will be included in the twenty twenty-one budget, which is currently being reviewed. So the recommended action tonight is to operate the Public Works Department to issue a request for qualification and advertise for bids for design bids, contract installed solar panels, battery storage, and related equipment for emergency power at the City Hall Complex. So that is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions from council this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to public comments. If you've been watching, attendees, you know the drill. Click on the hand to raise it, push star nine to unmute yourselves, or email us at publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us. Larry, do we have any attendees with their hands raised?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, and I do not have any emails on this item.
Okay, we'll just give it a beat before we move on to council comment and deliberation and a vote. We're almost done, folks. Larry?
I do not, I do not, nobody has raised their hands thus yet, and I do not see any public comment and email. and emails.
All right. This is not awkward at all. Okay. So, let's bring it back to council for further comment and deliberation and a vote. Any comments? Okay, can we enter, this will be the time to entertain a motion. Do we have a first?
I can make the motion.
I'll second.
A first from Councilmember Kaiser and a second from Councilmember Bertrand to authorize the Department of Public Works to issue a request for qualification and advertise for bids for a design-build contract to install solar panels, battery storage, and related equipment for emergency power at the City Hall complex. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. This item passes unanimously. We may now move on to our last item of the evening, 9E. This is to review the implicit bias training proposals. And Mr. Laurent, this is your item.
Thank you. Let me share my screen, make sure I do it right. Share, so I hope you see this. So, Mayor Brooks and council, thank you. I'm here to present about the implicit and unconscious bias training proposals that we've received and the reviewing of those proposals. City Council during its goal-setting session established a goal to provide implicit unconscious bias training for council member and staff. At the March 25th meeting, the City Council, we directed staff to issue an RFP for this training. The training for the RFP for council and non-police staff closed on April 19th. At the April 22nd meeting, City Council directed staff to review the proposals and return with the top three for council consideration. The city received seven proposals. I think originally, I said six, but I can't count that high, so I think I'm mistaken, but we did receive seven proposals. All the seven vendors have experience issuing this sort of training. Staff reviewed, myself, Chief McManus, and our personnel analyst, Renee Damar, reviewed and recommend the following three vendors to the council. Circle Up Education, CPS, HR Consulting, and Sean J. Fletcher Consultancy. All three of these recommended vendors have experience in the public sector and have strong references upon checking, and so we're very comfortable with all three of these recommendations. There is a significant difference in the proposal pricing ranges, but I think there'll be a lot of whittling down, because I think some of the proposals overestimated the number of staff and things like that, so I think that some of those numbers will change by the time it's all said and done. So the recommended action at this point is to select, for the council, select a vendor for the implicit and unconscious bias training, and then to authorize the city manager to negotiate and to enter into agreement for the training. And at that point, I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, council members, we have three groups in front of us this evening to pick from. Are there any questions about any of the three or questions for staff? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. And I apologize, I know we discussed this, but can staff remind me what we, or if we created a budgetary kind of guideline for this? How much money we set aside for it, or have we not done that yet? I apologize, I can't remember.
There was no budget item, but we believe between this year's training budget and next year's training budget, as well as some grant training we can get, we'd be able to cover all of the plans. But again, I think some of the higher proposal overestimated the number of employees we had, so it's going to be less. But I think based on what we see for over two years, because we believe this is going to kind of go over two fiscal years, there is enough funding in the training budget as well as some other sources.
Okay, so we didn't previously make a decision to set aside, you know, $50,000 or $20,000 or anything? We didn't?
I don't believe there was a number.
Okay, just making sure. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question about what were some of the things that made you choose these top three out of the seven? And Chief McManus, if you'd like to answer that, what stood out to you between the three of them and what you liked or what you were looking for when looking at the three of you?
Good evening, Mayor Brooks and council. Let me, I'll first start by saying the large majority of the applicants, seven in total, is pretty clear in review of the RFPs. We did these reviews independently and then came together as a three-person group. It was pretty clear that there was a lot of expertise that was introduced by way of the RFPs, and that was important to recognize and to see or to read. The other thing for me that was really important, and maybe more so in the three that we have recommended than the others, is a commitment on the front side to meet with city staff and council and others so that they can craft the training that is very specific to our needs here in Capitol. The projected curriculum, if you will, was fairly consistent with other implicit bias training that I've been part of for the last several years, but there was some uniqueness in some of the proposals, including the three that were bringing forward this evening, and we thought that that was important as well. And so I think the product, regardless of which one council decides upon, the product is going to be very close to meeting your expectations, our expectations, and probably providing the training and the guidance that we're seeking for staff. And I think that the three of us recognized that most in these three vendors as compared to the total seven. And so, from my perspective, that was the basis for my recommendations. And by the way, there was consistency in the ranking of the seven amongst the three of us. And so, and I think, Larry, you made note of it in the presentation, so this is not a pecking order of one through three, but rather three total. Any of the three would be perfectly fine and suitable for what we're looking for, I believe.
And just as a follow-up question, did any, because this is an organization that's going to need to cover three different groups, council and commission, commission members, city staff, and our police department, were there any that you found to be more qualified or have more experience? Did any of those stand out to you or look similar to the types of training that you receive every five years in the type of training?
Really similar, well, let me back up for it and make that statement. All three of these meet that expectation with regard to what you as our American council might be looking for. The other piece of it is there are a lot of similarities to some of the implicit bias training that I have participated in over the years, but each of these three had a little bit of a unique delivery of that curriculum and, from my perspective anyway, probably a little bit more relevant to our social expectations and the potential injustices and the dynamics of our climate today. And I think that was important to examine that as well. And so building upon some of the historical implicit bias training that's been in place for many years, each of these three, I predict, introduced that and then build upon that or go beyond that, at least by what I was able to reveal in the RFPs from the vendors.
Okay. And then Larry, for you, my last question is, in terms of staff, we're so used to these like online video things that just really aren't getting to the core of why I think council has agreed to bringing this forward and making it mandatory for staff. Were there any that you found to be more to the beat of Capitol, something that would work, that stood out to you out of the three for just city staff, not just these online trainings?
Correct. I think they all primarily wanted kind of, I will call them in-person, which is the remote, you know, where it's a kind of a group session as opposed to just having staff go into, you know, a two-hour session on their own. They do offer that as kind of a follow-up, which I think is probably going to be something that we look at, but kind of initial, they all kind of proposed as groups to kind of get together, and that's, you know, depending on the size, you know, I think they'll all work, and I think it's important, I think Chief McManus mentioned, that this is going to be a huge introduction for a lot of our staff, and I think that's why it is important to have this kind of first introduction, as in-person as we can get right now. And I think that was important. I mean, some, I think if I remember correctly, there was at least one that basically just said, here's our, you know, our training management system, have at it, and I think that was clear that wasn't what we were looking for. You know, I do believe that moving on, if that's, as we continue this, this may, that may be a great option for kind of refreshing and kind of maybe delving down into certain specifics, but I think as a start, the, all three of these vendors offered kind of a group training that can be tailored to our staff. And they, and again, I think, Chief McManus mentioned, they have experience in the local area and are aware of what's going on here.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and take this to public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, send an email now to publiccomment@ci.capitola.ca.us or to speak, please raise your hand now by clicking on reactions and clicking raise hand in your Zoom application or by dialing *9 on your landline phone. Our moderator will unmute you, and you will have up to three minutes to speak to this item.
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands raised, and I do not see any emails on this item.
Okay. We'll just give it a second before we bring it back for council comments and a vote.
I do not see any new hands, and I'm refreshing, I do not have any new emails on this.
Okay. So we'll bring this back for comments from council. Do we have any comments at this time? Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I first want to thank staff for taking the time to review all the applications and provide their recommendations. Of the three, I was really, of the three top recommendations that were provided, I was really impressed by Circle Up and Sean J. Fletcher. CPS is also impressive, really, they were all really impressive, but those two, I felt, were just kind of rose above the rest in terms of what they were offering. It seems like in terms of cost, Circle Up is kind of in the middle between CPS, which was at the lower end, the 4K, and then Sean J. Fletcher was higher, almost at 40K. So Circle Up is kind of in the middle there, and I was really impressed with their applications. So that's kind of where I'm leaning right now, but I would also be really excited to work with the Sean J. Fletcher group. So I just wanted to share that as my thoughts on the recommendations with the rest of the council.
Any other comments? Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks. I wanted to kind of mirror what Kristin said. I was, yeah, kind of intrigued by the Sean J. Fletcher, am I saying that right? Yes, and, but I was, I did have a little bit of sticker shock. So I don't know if we need to look more into that consideration or if we're fine with that type of budget, but other than that, I'm okay with either choice.
Any other comments from council? Vice Mayor Story?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, just from reviewing the proposals, and I think my preference would be for Circle Up Education. I thought that they had the most thorough proposal and detailed proposal, and obviously their pricing, I think is much better than Sean J. Fletcher. So I would support selecting Circle Up Education.
Any other comments from council? Out of the three? Councilmember Bertrand, did you have any feedback for us out of the three that you were leaning towards? Okay. So I would agree with everyone here that Circle Up definitely did catch my eye. I think that they're a great group, and I like the fact, I like who they've worked with, and their references are pretty exceptional. What I would just, again, stress, and I don't know what the process is with council on this, but again, to just ensure that these are the in-person, be it Zoom, trainings, that these are just not online modules, I feel like once we say yes to this, I just want to be absolutely sure that that's the kind, out of the options there, that that's what staff will be receiving on. And the other thing Larry maybe can address is, I don't believe we made a decision on whether this is going to be annual or every two years. Can you remind me where we stood on that?
We, I don't think we made that decision. This was going, the first decision was going to be mandatory for all staff for this year, and I think it can be reconsidered or considered by the council as an ongoing training program. I would suggest after we've gone through the first kind of sessions, we can bring this back to kind of work it, because we've got it handled for this year, and, you know, then there'd be time to decide if this is what council would like moving forward. You know, it'd be good to kind of, I think it'd be good to kind of get one group of these trainings under our belt before we kind of make that final decision, to make sure, you know, that what we're seeing on paper is what we're going to get in real life. I have a lot of confidence in that, but it's always good to.
Councilmember Peterson?
I'd like to make a motion that we select Circle Up as the vendor for implicit and unconscious bias training, and that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and enter into an agreement for the training.
You have a first? Do we have a second?
I can second.
We have a first from Councilmember Peterson, a motion, pardon me, and a second from Councilmember Kaiser. Chloe, I believe, I don't need to repeat that since it was said, so can I have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Story.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. That item passes unanimously. Thank you very much. To staff for putting that together. We're gonna now move on to item 10, adjournment. Yay, we did it. Thank you, council members. Thank you, staff. Thank you, thank you, Katie, for all of your work on that item. We really appreciate you so, so much. Remember to be kind to yourselves and to others out there. Good night, everyone.